Okay.
Hey, good evening and welcome to the May 15, 2024 Special Hybrid Planning Commission Meeting. I'm Mike Murphy, the Chair. Tonight's Hybrid Planning Commission Meeting is being brought to you courtesy of Zoom. Welcome to all and thank you for joining us tonight. Commissioners, please have your mics turned on for the roll call. Please call the roll.
Commissioner Acuse.
I, here.
Commissioner Batazzo.
Here.
Commissioner Boatsman. Commissioner Boatsman.
I, I said present.
Okay. Yeah.
Okay.
You hear me now.
Commissioner Gels.
No.
Absent. Commissioner Resheez.
Here.
Vice Chair Ragham.
Present.
And Chair Murphy.
Here. Okay. We have a quorum. For this meeting, we continue to utilize the Zoom platform. I will do my best to recognize you in the order in which your hands are raised. After being recognized, you may then ask your question or make your comment. Our first item business is public appearances. This is the opportunity for anyone to speak to the commission about issues of concern. Is there anyone who has signed up for appearances that wishes to address the commission?
There is no one signed up for appearances.
Okay. We now move on to special business. The first item of special business is to review and consider approving the minutes of the May special meeting. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Well, we have.
I'll second it.
Okay, been moved and seconded. Can we, can you, Zach and Adam, can you please call the roll?
Commissioner Acuse.
I.
Commissioner Batazzo.
I.
Commissioner Boatsman.
I.
Commissioner Resheez.
I.
Vice Chair Ragham.
I.
And Chair Murphy.
I. Okay. The minutes are approved. The second item of business is the Planning Commission Agenda Bill PCB 2411, which are the revised March 27 minutes. Adam, I understand you're going to explain that to us?
Yes, so this is pretty straightforward. This is just a revision of the March 27 minutes to reflect two times where the Planning Commission reached a consensus to make amendments to the housing element. We, sometimes we track where consensus is reached on those different elements. For this one, we didn't in the original draft, but we've been asked to include that in an updated, just so that we can track where that change was made in the record.
Is there any discussion or questions about that? Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the revised minutes?
So moved. Second.
Been moved and seconded. Please conduct the roll call vote.
All right, Commissioner Acuse.
I have a comment.
Yeah, we have you. Carolyn.
Yeah, I just want to really thank you, Mike, for catching this. I mean, it's just kind of remarkable that you, who, who caught this?
I don't know.
Oh. Do we know?
It was a series of comments, public comments were asking about this, and so we just, to, to make the record more clear, we wanted to update the minutes, yeah.
Well, well done. Thanks very much.
Okay, back to the roll call.
Commissioner Acuse.
I.
Commissioner Batazzo.
I.
Commissioner Boatsman.
I.
Commissioner Resheez.
I.
Vice Chair Ragham.
I.
And Chair Murphy.
I.
Right, motion passes six zero.
Okay, third and final item of special business is the Planning Commission Agenda Bill PCB 2410, Open Space Zone, Second Review. Welcome City Manager Jesse Bone. Or Allison, are you the presenter on that or?
Jesse's here to take any questions that come up as we go through things. But I'm going to go take us through the matrix of the comments and questions we received and kind of do a brief overview of those and the proposed amendments that we need to review.
Okay.
So, one sec, I'm going to share my screen. Okay. So I wanted to just run through the matrix really quick and speak to each of these. The first item was a really minor amendment that's been made in the draft, just adding the dash. The second item is also fairly minor. I did suggest a slight change to the amendment that was proposed. My intent there was to call out the titles of those code sections. I felt like that might be a little more direct way to speak to what I thought was the intent of this comment to specify that, you know, one piece of the code relates to wireless communication facilities, the larger macros, and the other section of code relates to small wireless facilities, or what we sometimes call small cells. And so I'll leave it to Adam or to Commissioner Ragham to speak to whether this meets the intent, but I was hoping that this would be maybe a clearer way of clarifying that.
Yeah. Um, I mean, I like seeing, yeah, the, that's small. It'd be nice if we could see macro maybe in parentheses after wireless communications, but the logic behind the staff response makes sense to go with the actual title of those sections of code. I think in oh forty, if I remember, there's like a distinction there where it says that, I'm looking at it right now, that it refers to macro, but, I mean.
It's a redefinition of the terms, like a wireless.
Okay.
Facility, what's known as a macro and the small wireless facility.
Because like before, before diving into this with the first park zone, yeah, I wasn't aware that there was a distinction between small and macro, so I thought we ought to keep that clear in the code, but, yeah.
I think from the staff perspective, it is clear based on the definitions that are provided there.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Okay, moving on, there's this, first, number three, this one had to do with the addresses, and I know Carson Hornsby was able to work with our GIS team to clarify those and make sure there's distinct addresses for each of those properties. And then the next two comments had to do with the zoning map and the abbreviation that was used for the public institution zone. PI is the correct abbreviation, and that's been corrected throughout that map. I can show that a little later. And then also there was a request for clarification about what would be happening with the zoning of the Wildwood property. So, for now, for this interim between now and when the actual park zone is adopted, that property will be staying in residential zoning, but then when the park zone is brought forward, we will be proposing changing that property to park zoning. So at that time, the map will need to be amended again. Okay, number five, this was just asking to incorporate the changes on the land use map. You may recall the land use map had like call out boxes that were indicating which designations needed to change. We've provided now an updated version of the map with those changes implemented. I'll show that once we finish going through this matrix. And then number six has to do, it's a question about how we're regulating e-bikes and e-scooters and whether that should be in the code or somewhere else. We did clarify the response on this one. Jesse Bond was able to take a look at it this afternoon and wanted to provide a little more information. Jesse, do you want to speak to that now and just give a little bit more context?
Or, how's my audio?
Sounds good.
Okay. I'm getting that like, you know, signal of death, your internet connection is unstable, so. Yeah, apologies, I didn't get into the matrix until after the staff had already sent it to you, so I, I slightly revised our response. Just zooming out on the whole city, our city code in its entirety does not regulate yet e-scooters or e-bikes, and that's something that was flagged a couple years ago. It's, it's sitting on a long list of items that, that need to be addressed, so I wanted to just make sure you understood that. In terms of parks, open space trails, the type of bikes, scooters that are allowed, we talked about it with the Parks Commission and the Open Space Trust. And I, I think the, the short answer is there's a lot more work to be done to determine how we're going to regulate e-scooters and e-bikes, and even taking it a step further, revisiting where bikes are current, regular bikes, the, the human powered kind, where they're allowed, where equestrians are allowed. So that was, that was left as an important follow-up item for us, and I think those regulations, again, the city's going to have to look at citywide regulations. There was a section of our city code that, that lays out park rules. That's an appropriate place for these types of regulations, or individual parks and open space and trails can have their own rules. So that's a long way of saying, we didn't feel it belonged in the, the zone. The circumstances at each facility are slightly different, and as a city, we have a lot more work to do to address these types of uses. I don't know, it's something that we'll be looking, we're, we're putting together our work plan, our proposed work plan for the next two years. It'll go to the council this fall. The idea is we may want to get the, the pedestrian and bike plan updated first. That will certainly inform how we approach all this, but I'm not sure we can wait that long. So it's a conversation I need to have with the city council. Anyway, I, I hope that gives some contact, gives some context for all the moving parts on that topic.
Victor.
Just a quick follow-up question to Jesse. I caught one part of your, your comment, and I wasn't sure if I caught the second part. You said you're going to come up, you're going to be following up with some park rules. Did you also say that we're going to also have rules for open space as well, a separate set of rules?
No, sorry, I probably wasn't as clear as I could have been.
I probably didn't hear, I probably didn't.
That's okay. So we can address, let's just say we decide e-scooters and e-bikes are not allowed. If that were the case, and if it were a blanket decision, it would, it would live nicely in the city's parks code. We have a section of city code that, that lays out parks rules. But it's, it's a very black and white approach. That may not work in this case because e-scooters and e-bikes may be allowed in some parks and not others. Could be allowed on a trail, but not in open space. So the alternative to that is, is individual park rules. So this, Victor, I think the point I was trying to make is there's a couple layers here. I'm not sure where these regulations are going to land, but citywide, we need to address them.
So the, the reason I'm asking that question is not so much on, on bicycles, but I know that for open space, we have horses in Pioneer Park, and that's, that's a historical thing that we've had for a long time. I'm not arguing against that, but I'm just wondering how that's going to be handled and whether that will, would that be incorporated into kind of a similar structure where we have open space rules as well? And.
Yeah, I, I would, I would say yes, and there's a nuance, of course, with Pioneer Park and Inks from Open Space. The Open Space Trust governs the rules on those properties, not necessarily the city. So the trust makes those decisions. The city still stewards all the other open space properties. Obviously, we work together, you know, we're still a team, but it's just, just for awareness, the trust may decide you know, continue equestrian use, and the Parks Commission may advise the city council that the other open space properties should no longer allow equestrian use. I'm not exactly sure how that is, is going to play out. We have not picked, in fairness, this, this was flagged during our discussion of the zone, but we have not had a, a discussion about any of this formally with the Parks Commission or the trust. Although I, you know, the trust has certainly talked about this over many, many years.
Fair enough, thanks.
Carolyn.
Approximately when is the bike and ped plan redo supposed to happen?
Going off memory here, I think we're supposed to start it in 2026. It's in our Transportation Improvement Plan.
Okay.
It, it's coming. I think this, this is, we haven't scoped it yet, but it's intended to be a, a really comprehensive update. I think it will take at least eighteen months to get the plan done, possibly twenty-four months. I think that, just given the volume of work that needs to be done, and what I anticipate will be a really robust engagement process. And if any of my staff are online and can double check the date, the date I just mentioned in the tip, that would be great.
Twenty-six, twenty-seven, I'm going off my memory as well.
Okay.
So while I, I really agree with the priority that, excuse me, that Angie placed here. Um, I think getting to it with the date that you have, and it's really something that should be addressed in the context of all the other bike and pedestrian issues, that will be the best way to do it. And given that I'm not seeing, I go, I'm in the open spaces a lot, and I'm not seeing even bikes in there, really hardly ever, and never, never e-bike, so I think we'll do okay to get to it in a couple of years. Thanks.
Any other comments, Angie? Do you want to comment on this since you raised it?
Nope, I just flagged it for discussion later, not necessarily today.
Okay.
Okay. I am going to see if I can pull up these maps. Wait, I'm just going to tick through, so just to show you what has changed. This is the land use map, land use designations, and that was the prior version. We've updated that to implement all of those changes to the designations, and these ones have now turned bright green, and that tract is going to be moved down there. Okay, this is the old version of the zoning map. It was noted that the incorrect abbreviation of P was on a couple of the properties. That's now been updated so that they all have PI. So those are all pretty straightforward. It's also going to put up draft of the development regulation. So I did make that change we discussed earlier here, and the abbreviation was corrected down here. I don't know if anyone is interested in proposing any other amendments, but that is the conclusion of the updates that the staff have made at this point. And we can open it up, Chair, for any further comments or questions.
Victor.
So one thing that I noticed in the, in the maps that were in the packet, I saw, I saw Wildwood became, or was designated park. I saw Island Crest also designated as park, and, and those two were both called out as hybrids, or they'll be discussed in the parks discussion. But I was a little bit, but the other one that, that we had talked about last week was Mercer Dale, and these were all hybrid properties that were kind of parks, but are also kind of open space. And I'm just, and I was just wondering if you could just provide us on color on, on how we were able to get Mercer Dale designated, or a portion of Mercer Dale designated as open space, but not the Island Park and Wildwood.
A good question. Mercer Dale Park and the north Mercer Dale hillside are actually, they're next to each other, but two distinct properties. North Mercer Dale hillside isn't, is already classified as an open space area. What's interesting about Mercer Dale Park, as you probably know a little bit about that park, is that there's, there's open space, wetland and wetland buffers that extend into Mercer Dale Park. So I think one of the questions we were left with is, should something differently be done with what is at the west side of Mercer Dale Park, and I, and I don't know yet. So, so the hillside could easily be classified to open space. I think we've got to go back and look at Mercer Dale Park a little further. Wildwood is a chameleon. We, we need to talk about, is Wildwood an open space area and intended to be regulated as such, or is it, is it going to be regulated as a park? It has characteristics of both. It's classified in our park system as a park, not an open space area. So we put that on the list to talk about further. Island Crest Park is similar issues. It's, Island Crest has an open space area, or open space and part of it, but it's one giant parcel. And again, not enough time to really evaluate if, are we going to, you know, subdivide that, cleave off open space? We, we don't really want parcels with split zones that creates some problems for us. So it just became like, we, we need to, we need to look at these parks in this next phase when we have a little more time and, and time to be a little more thoughtful, not as rushed, and make a recommendation on how best to manage these properties. I think the other issue is, these aren't the only parks that have open space areas, and then Luther Burbank does as well quite extensively, but they don't all live on the edge, so it's, it's, it's not clean to, you know, to, I keep using this word, to kind of cleave out the open space and zone it as open space. So we're going to have to look at it, and that will be work that the Parks Commission will be doing at the end of this year, and, and I'm sure that work is going to go into the following year.
Yeah, I, I had taken that away from our, our discussion last week. I, I, I was just a little bit surprised that, that Mercer Dale it kind of made the cut. I wasn't aware that there were two separate parcels, so thanks for the clarification.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, conversation for a future day, but Jesse, I was kind of hoping that, just wanted to put note for the record that I'm hoping that we can talk about, when we're talking about that issue, doing some expansion of open spaces in some of those parks. Just because we have a tremendous amount of lawn, which is not really a sustainable feature. I understand that we need it for recreation. But there's just, there's just huge amounts of lawn on Mercer Island that aren't used, and it would be neat if we could actually create a little more of that open space by adding trees, and I think the urban, urban forest plan calls for some of that, but just putting that in the hopper for that future discussion.
That probably lives, just to be candid, that, that probably lives outside of the scope of the park zone work, and, you know, we'd really have to look at the pros plan to see what advice it gives on that, but your comments noted, and I recall you mentioned that in a previous meeting as well.
Okay, any other questions or comments? Allison, are you expecting us now to have a motion and vote on, on this?
Yeah, if we're satisfied with the draft and the maps, then we can make a motion to recommend that those are included in this.
I'll make a motion to pass as amended. To approve as amended.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, let's call the roll. Adam?
Commissioner Acuse.
I.
Commissioner Batazzo.
I.
Commissioner Boatsman.
I.
Commissioner Resheez.
I.
Vice Chair Ragham.
I.
And Chair Murphy.
I. Motion passes unanimously. Allison, Jesse, thank you very much.
Thank you.
That was well done and nicely prepared and went very smoothly. Now we move on to other business. Allison, is there a deputy director report?
Yeah, I was just going to give a quick overview of upcoming schedule. Let me just share this again really quick. All right, so I was able to meet with Chair Murphy and Vice Chair Ragham earlier this week just to talk through the next few weeks of meetings, and wanted to give you a quick overview of that again. So, next week, we'll be bringing a summary of the, the comments received with the open house and the survey. We'll also be bringing the results of the consistency review that our consultant has been working on. And there'll be some recommended additional amendments based on that review. We're not expecting you to take any action on either of those items next week. It's merely just an informational briefing, and then you can use that information along with the feedback you get at the public hearing to make amendments further on in the process. Sure, Akil.
Hi, I'm looking at the schedule, and given we've had weekly meetings pretty consistently this year, it seems like the May 22 meeting is asynchronous information that could be delivered via email. I have a pretty strong preference that we could read the material as opposed to be presented it, given the number of back-to-back meetings we have. Is there any opportunity for that to happen?
It would be a possibility, I think. Particularly with the open house results, if that will be a memo that you certain.
It's, it's that one in particular that I was, I was asking about. That just seems like a reader report.
Maybe interest in having some discussion about that. It wouldn't have to happen next week. It could happen after the public hearing on May 29 meeting, or at a later meeting, we could break it up based on the topics that will be discussed in the June meetings. You know, we will be proposing some additional amendments, I believe, and, or maybe questions about why are those needed, or why is it ordered this way? So I think at some point, the commission would likely want to discuss that, whether it needs to happen next week, I think. Could be open for consideration.
Carolyn.
Um, refresh my memory perhaps, but my recollection is that a public hearing, I mean, we may have some testimony there, I, I guess, and some appearances. But other than that, there isn't anything else on the agenda, other than just to present the draft and hear from.
Anything else on the agenda at this time, the meeting, the main purpose of the meeting would be to hear from your comment. And I have no idea how many people might be signing up to speak at that meeting. A lot of people have asked me, what I think, I think similar to the open house, it's really hard to predict. Or maybe a preference from some people to have that, you know, virtual online Zoom opportunity that they didn't have at the open house. It could be five people, it could be fifty people, and if we give them each three minutes, obviously, that's a huge difference in the amount of time it would take.
I, I guess my, my question is kind of related to Kate's, because I, as you mentioned, maybe these other items from May 22 could be tacked on, you know, to the 29th and, and save a meeting there. But whatever, whatever you think is right, I'm, I'm good. Thanks.
Allison, how significant is the body of material expected on the consistency review, and is that something less likely to require some discussion and question answer?
Well, the, the body of material is very large. We reviewed a draft of the initial like assessment. The consultant made a big matrix comparing all of the multi-county planning policies and county-wide planning policies with the policies we have in the draft elements. I kind of cross-checked and mapped everything out. It's about two hundred pages. So we, we're also preparing a shorter, more concise matrix that will just be. Matrix that will just be the recommended amendments and the reason why we need to make amendment, the maximum. Um, I don't yet know how long that will be or how many exactly there are, but. It's still, you know, multiple dozen items that we're going to need to consider making amendments on.
Uh, Carolyn.
Notwithstanding, you know, concerns about being able to make meetings, I mean, if 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 we don't have a quorum or something, you know, we would need to do something, but. It kind of sounds like there's some substantial stuff to look at, and and you know, that being the case. Uh, I'd like to feel like we had enough time to really look at it, ask questions, discuss it, so on and so forth, so. I kind of like that May twenty second meeting myself.
Uh, Kate.
Um, for the exact same reason Carolyn mentioned, I would prefer to wait until the twenty ninth. I do not have time to read a two hundred page document in one week, considering we have not been provided it yet. This is May twenty second is is that one week away or week and a day? Um.
We're not anticipating that you would have read it and reviewed it in detail prior to the meeting. I mean, the purpose of the meeting is to walk you through it and review on the information.
I, it's, people have different learning styles, and I'm just saying that it's it's not helpful for me to. Have my opportunity to ask questions be before I've had the opportunity to actually read the material. It just doesn't make sense to me that we wouldn't read it before. I don't know. I maybe some people learn better by hearing a presentation, but for me being actually able to read it before. Uh, discussing it is um very helpful. I mean, it that may not be popular among this group, though, so I'd love to hear from other commissioners. I think Carolyn and I have both spoken twice on this. Can can we hear from other folks?
Um, Alison, let me ask you a question. Uh, when would you expect? To have for us the version of this consistency review? That we would be responsible for digesting.
Um, we're aiming to send it out by the end of this week, so Friday afternoon. So it really just gives you the weekend plus a couple of days to look at it in advance of that meeting.
So based on the work that's been done to date. Do you have any ballpark as to the volume of material that's actually going to come into our hands?
Well, we will be giving you the two hundred page matrix as a reference, and then we'll be giving you the more brief. Summary as well. I'm gonna ask Adam, do you remember how many items there are that we think will need amendments? I know it's still being refined, but do you have a ballpark on that?
Um, yeah, so the, there's about. I think there's somewhere between thirty and forty gaps that were identified. But I think that the the key thing is it, I I, the reason that we wanted to have a meeting next week is to go through that. Give you the explanation of where this stuff came from, so that when. On the twenty ninth and the fifth, you're seeing amendments being proposed by staff. You'll know where this stuff came from ahead of time. That was the the purpose of that briefing. I mean, I think that on the twenty ninth, we're not necessarily asking for a decision to be made on any of this stuff. And so if um if the briefing wouldn't be useful for you, um. That would be a a decision you could make at that point, but we're not. Um, that's that's roughly where we're at, is about thirty-ish gaps that we'll be looking at.
And and how substantive or tactical are these gaps or? Amendments that we're considering?
I mean, there, I don't think there are um. It's not like we need to rewrite the land use element. Um, it's more like there's a couple of things that we just need to refine in some of the policies. Particularly in the transportation element, because this is all related to the. Um, PSRC's, um, the Puget Sound Regional Council's um policies. So it's it's more of a refining than it is a a big major oval overhaul of anything. And staff, we're we're planning to prepare some alternatives for you to consider um. A- as we put together the recommendation um in June.
So it seems to me the option here is for that information to be given to us. And everyone will have the opportunity to review those before the twenty ninth. And. When the amendments are proposed, we will have had the background. The alternative you're proposing is that you give it to us this week and that we. Are able to question, ask questions and get a better understanding on the twenty seconds so that. The amendments can be addressed more uh efficiently on the twenty ninth. Seems to me those are our. Alternatives.
Yes, I think that that is correct.
Carolyn.
Um, in your use of the word gaps, Adam, are are you talking in about? Policies that we're just missing, that we don't, we don't have policies to address certain things? Um, that that's planner's talk for.
Sure, so it um, there is. We're kind of getting, this is, I think, why the briefing on the twenty second was planned, so that we could kind of get into this information, but. The the idea is there, there are some of these multi-county planning policies. That have, there's some gray area and how we could interpret them, and we found some places where we could strengthen our response to those issues. So it, you know, because the the regional plan is for um a four county area, whereas our plan is for. Just the city, and so when we're making it more specific. Uh, we're filling in some of that gray area, and there's just some of those places where we can make that a little stronger. That's all.
Thank you.
Angie.
Um, Adam, did I hear you correctly? That you indicated that you would not be expecting the Planning Commission to make a decision on any of the proposals on the twenty ninth of May either?
Well, eh, the decision on these will come after the public hearing, so the process. I was planning on going over this on the twenty second too. Uh, but the the process is essentially, we want to get this information to you on the twenty second. That so that you have, you you know where it came from, and then. Either on the twenty ninth or the fifth, we would provide you with some recommended amendments to make um to the draft. To answer those gaps, um, so that staff would draft something by then. But no, you won't be asked to make a decision on this until it's part of your overall recommendation on the comprehensive plan update.
So I think, um, thank you for the clarification. I think just to answer Kate's question, I feel fairly grounded in the process and don't need an additional meeting. To review that, um, I would prefer to spend my time actually reviewing the content. So that I'm prepared when you're presenting or when the city's presenting, here's how we took the content. Here's how we took what we're dealing with in terms of doing these updates, and here's what we're proposing in amendments. Uh, on the twenty ninth and then dealing with the other business, it just seems like. For me, as a commissioner, I need time to just digest the information, and then I'll be prepared to handle all of that laundry. On the twenty ninth rather than space it out. Um, just in responding to Commissioner Accuse's question.
Haven't heard from you, Adam, or Victor on this. Your thoughts on having a meeting on the twenty second or not? Adam.
I mean, I I don't have a strong opinion either way, although. Hearing what Commissioner Batazzo said and the uncertainty that Alison. Um, mentioned about the public hearing, I. You know, if we have fifty people show up, I'd be, I might be concerned about having to digest all of those public comments in addition to. A report from staff on in one night, but. You know, if if we don't have many comments, then that's a non-issue, so. I don't know. Just just thoughts.
Okay, Victor, any thoughts?
Sure, I agree with uh Commissioner Accuse and Commissioner Batazzo. We just had a thirty minute meeting. Um, I'm actually getting a little bit tired of these micro meetings. Um, I don't need a meeting to discuss the plan for a plan for a plan.
Hey, I think um I'm inclined to dispense with the meeting on the twenty second myself. Um, so Kate, uh, further thoughts?
I was just gonna say, um. Is it possible just to make it an optional meeting and and you ask us for an RSVP, so if folks, once they see the material. Really want to come, like it's an optional information session, is that, is that possible with this group? Why don't we get the packet out?
Early, maybe we won't rush to get it out on Friday, but we'll get it out Monday or Tuesday next week, and then. If people have questions and would like to discuss it with staff, we could set up individual or small group meetings, um, when that's convenient for everyone. Um, you know, the second half of next month, same time. If no one has, we just want to discuss it on the twenty ninth, that's fine too.
Well, let's see what the reaction is after you get the information out.
Okay. I'm certainly not going to argue with canceling a meeting. I also like having Wednesday evenings, not not having meetings.
Okay.
Um, so just to conclude, uh, what I've got here on the slide, um, so after the public hearing, we're going to be looking to split. The elements into two groups, and this will help. Break up the information a little bit and give you time to submit proposed amendments on each group. So we wanted to make sure there was as much time as possible to think about any amendments for the more complex elements like land use, housing and economic development. So the deadline for that would be June tenth, and then the deadline for the other three elements would be June third. So we'll ask you to submit in writing any proposals for further amendments on those. Then at June fifth, we'll review the first group. We'll also need to. Elect Chair and Vice Chair, review the bylaws, and appoint a new member to the Housing Work Group at that meeting, some housekeeping. And then at the June twelfth meeting, we'll review the proposed amendments for land use, housing, economic development. If we're able to, we can make a recommendation to the City Council on the full. Comprehensive plan at that meeting. And if we need more time, we have set aside June twenty sixth as an optional fallback meeting if we're just not able to. Resolve all the discussions on June twelfth.
Hey.
All right. That's all I've got.
Okay, thank you. Um, so I'm gonna um take a different approach here on planned absences. If you have a planned absence, I would uh email the Chair and Vice Chair with a copy to Alison. And uh so that these are not public announcements. Uh, and uh I think that's a better approach. Um, so that uh people's privacy is maintained. Um, so. Is there any other business uh that we have, any other comments or questions or anything else from Alison? Seeing none. The next special meeting is scheduled for, let's see, we nix the twenty second, so we're at the public hearing on the twenty ninth. Um, there being no other business to come before the Planning Commission, the time is now. Six forty-five PM and the meeting is adjourned. Please stay seated uh and uh on screen until the staff has terminated the broadcast. Good evening and thank you for joining us and good job on a short meeting.